All right, Director O'Hare here, calling our meeting to order for March sixth, twenty twenty five. This, this is our business meeting. It is now five thirty eight P M. May I take roll call?
Director Marugo.
Director O'Hare.
Director Saldivar here.
Director O'Hare here.
Director Taughton here.
Director Stickle here. Everyone is present. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our next agenda item is our pledge of allegiance. May we all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our um next agenda item is our commitment to governing style. Let's see, do I have a reader?
I'll take it. Um, commitment to governing style. As a reminder to the public and directors, the board will govern lawfully, observing policy governance principles with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal procedure, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present, and governing proactively rather than reactively.
Thank you, Mark. Going on to our reading of the mission and vision statements. Do I have a reader?
Sure. Mission statement, I'll just get, mission statement. Gone? Oh, it's hers.
I have issues. Okay. Mission statement, Bromley East Charter School empowers students to achieve academic excellence and leadership through critical thinking, reasoning, problem solving, and character development in a safe environment. Vision statement, Bromley East Charter School strives to become a pre- preeminent charter school in the state of Colorado, where all students realize their maximum intellectual, character, and leadership potential in a diverse and well-defined ethical environment. Thank you so much. Moving on to our next agenda item. This is our public comment period, noting that I have nobody in the audience right now for public comment. We will move on to the next agenda item. This is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the table? Director Marugo motions to approve the consent agenda.
Directors Altivar will second.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to our next agenda item is executive session. We have no executive session today, so we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is our monitoring reports. The first one is three D financial conditions.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're doing well. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. So I'm going to be reporting on executive limitation, three D financial condition and activities. And so it's going to be slightly repetitive in that we're recapping results of ops from last fiscal year, June thirty, twenty twenty four. In addition to reporting on our financial results through January thirty first, twenty twenty five. So I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. In terms of the thirteen goals that we have, summarily, uh, we're meeting in compliant with all thirteen. Terms of data reported through January thirty first, twenty twenty five. All revenue received nine million, two hundred fifty-five thousand and expenses, eight million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, difference of about eight hundred thousand, so that would be our net income uh, through January thirty first. We began the year with fund balance of five point two million. That's primarily driven again by the, the mill levy that was passed in twenty twenty two. Our financial results are based on enrollment of one thousand, two hundred and fourteen kiddos. And we're currently projecting a surplus through June thirtieth of one point four million. So we report compliance. Um, in terms of our, our goal, number one, expend more funds than have been received in the fiscal year. I, I think that really addresses that debt service coverage ratio to make sure that we always have a small increase in fund balance. Um, in terms of data reported, debt service coverage ratio, one point one times. Uh, these are the requirements, seventy-five days of cash on hand and five percent unrestricted operating reserve. So as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, uh, we had five point eight million in cash investments and investments or a hundred and forty-eight days of operating in cash, which exceeded the requirement of seventy-five days. So that excess right there is about two point eight million dollars. Terms of the debt covenants, they won't be measured until the end of fiscal year because that's when we technically close everything to a full accrual basis. In terms of um cash investments currently at the end of January, six point two million. Daily spend rate is about forty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars. So um, when we push that into the, the cash balance, the reason, the outcome is about a hundred and forty-four days. So again, we're well beyond the seventy-five day requirement. In terms of um, um, normal ops, funds are um, to be spent to extend useful life of existing facilities, create operational and energy efficiencies. Um, and so we have resources in C E C to address those needs. And at the end of January, um, C E C had savings of two million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand to support those goals. And C C also held a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in restricted cash for debt service. Regarding Tabor, uh, we have to maintain an emergency reserve at three percent. And basically that's three percent of total revenue less federal revenue. In terms of Tabor reserve at the end of last fiscal year, that came in at forty, four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Terms of other reserves that we had, uh, legal reserve, hundred and eighty-eight thousand, prepaid expense reserve, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, and the operating reserve, seven fourteen. And we also had a debt refi set aside of two point two million, leaving um, one point three six million in unallocated fund balance, which is below the uh, threshold under statute of fifteen percent of your annual operating expenses. So we report compliance there. Um, in terms of borrowed funds from reserves unless directed by the board, in terms of uh, data reported, let's see here. So we report compliance on that front. Terms of data report, according to Tabor law, we have to have, um, uh, we just spoke to this, uh, reserve of four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Obviously, we have net income year to date. In terms of uh, the daily spend, so we're definitely um, in compliance as it relates to any need to borrow reserves or borrow from reserves. Terms of the administration will not, and this is goal number three, borrow funds for, uh, for the general fund, which excludes C E C. Uh, we interpret that to mean the school shall not borrow funds through a bond issues to fit our participation or a capital lease without express approval by the board. Uh, data reported, um, this is in reference to cash. And our debt covenants require uh, two point nine million or a hundred and seventy-five days. So we definitely don't have a need to borrow any uh, money at this time. And so we report compliance. In terms of goal number four, uh, allow the general fund balance to fall below the Tabor reserve. Uh, obviously, we're compliant there. In terms of uh, how far above that Tabor requirement and that five percent reserve we are, I think it's best just to kind of take a look at that graphic. And you can see um, through this fiscal year projected twenty-four, twenty-five. We're adding potentially one point four. We started off the year with five point two, so uh, you're looking at maybe six point six million. Um, now keep in mind, uh, this is a planned increase in reserves to address the refi that is occurring uh, this fall in September. And our commitment there is a four million dollar pay down in debt. So um, obviously, in line with those plans, because we're preparing in such a way, we are definitely compliant with this metric. So I'll recap for the year ending, six thirty, twenty twenty-four expenditures were fourteen point three million. Budget average, uh, annual expenditures, fourteen point nine. Total calculated reserve for F Y twenty-three, twenty-four, four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um, in terms of um, the uh, projection in those out years, I'd like you to point out that uh, after that pay down, we still end F Y twenty-five, twenty-six with probably about two point three million dollars in fund balance. And then we rebound immediately thereafter in F Y twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, north of three million. Um, so I mean, that's really, uh, a really good uh, uh, trajectory. In terms of uh, goal number five, use board designated long-term reserves. Uh, there's no plan to use any long-term reserves other than this big refi that's coming up. So obviously, we're planning for that. But even after uh, doing that pay down of debt, uh, we're still going to be compliant with all our metrics regarding um, days of cash on hand, regarding our debt service coverage ratio after that. And so um, I think um, the banks can be actually, uh, our banker that we have the debt with is actually going to be very happy that we're planning to um, pay that down. So, which is exciting because coming up on um, I believe it's the twenty-seventh in this month, uh, Marin is going to visit the school and do a little tour. And then we'll talk about the upcoming transaction. Um, in addition to that, we have our financier, Matt O'Meara, who helped us with our last uh, refi. Um, he's going to be on the finance call on the twenty-fourth of uh, this month. So yeah, things are uh, coming together on that project. So with regard to uh, use of long-term reserves other than the refi, uh, uh, which is next year, currently we report compliance. Conduct inter-fund, this is goal number six, conduct inter-fund transfers unless directed by the board. So we haven't uh, conducted any borrowing between funds uh, for a number of years. And you can see that the last time we did that was in F Y nineteen. So we recall, report compliance on that front. Uh, let's see. Admin will not fail to settle payroll obligations and vendor payables. So in terms of uh, uh, paying our obligations, uh, because of our great financial position, uh, we are not challenged in any, on any front with regard to making sure that we have great relationships with um, all those vendors that do great work for us. Uh, we report compliance there. In terms of payroll obligations, as, as we've been speaking about recently, we did uh, in this last year, move over to paychecks. We have about seven payrolls under our belt with them, and I think things are going really well. Sam has really stepped up and is doing a great job on the payroll front, which is great that we can absorb that into existing operations without adding additional staff. So we report compliance on that front, making sure that everybody, um, all our vendor relationships are in great shape. In terms of payroll, um, other than what I had just mentioned, uh, we really don't really have any challenges. Obviously, the other big change was C E B T. We just um, got off a call uh, this last week with um, uh, their team. And we are going to see an increase for F Y uh, twenty-six. But um, I think that's a function of a couple of things. Um, we don't have a lot of claims experience with this new plan, one. And um, industry-wide, we are seeing increases on average across the board. So um, pretty much expected, but as we build that into the uh, F Y twenty-six plan, uh, the numbers still work well. So um, it's definitely something that the school can address. So we report compliance on that front. Terms of goal number nine, split orders to avoid any parameters or procedures outlined in the financial policies. That's not a practice uh, that we employ. Nor have we ever considered doing that. So we report compliance on that front. And we have pretty uh, strict uh, purchasing policies and Sam and, and the team do a great job on making sure that we follow our finance policies. Terms of ten, inquire encumbered lease or dispose of real property or land. And uh, um, I recall, um, you know, considering a purchase of land, you know, just adjacent to the property, but that really hasn't been uh, consideration in many, many years. So um, we haven't transacted any business on that front, so we report compliance. Uh, goal number eleven, accept revenues from sources not in fact in appearance consistent with the mission and values of the organization. I'm not aware of any um, um, revenue streams that have come to the school and uh, are not uh, congruent with our uh, mission and vision. So I report compliance there. Uh, twelve, fail to aggressively pursue material receivables after receivable grace period. Our accounts receivable balances have been pretty close to zero, even when we process grants uh, for reimbursement. The district turns around those payments in short order, so that works out very well. So um, no concern on that front, and we report compliance. Goal thirteen, operate without adequate internal controls or receipts and disbursements designed to avoid unauthorized payment material dissipation of assets. So uh, again, we have an annual audit and um, I guess we could say we have a lot of eyes on the cash register uh, between Jen, Sam, uh, myself, the finance committee, our external auditors, the districts. We watch our pennies very carefully, so it's definitely not a consideration. Um, and we report compliance. In terms of internal audit staff, we are happy with um, Holting and Company, they do a great job and we're looking forward to working with them again uh, for F Y twenty-five audit. So yeah, all things considered, um, we're in great shape. Uh, do you guys have any questions regarding uh, the financial condition activities, three D?
Hey Bart, can I, I want to ask you. And I know you've probably told us this before, but on that refi, so buying down by four million, what does that put the total refi amount to? And what are the terms that you're hoping to obtain with that?
Okay, it'll put it right at basically uh, ten million. Obviously, um, the number that we're using is four point two million, uh, set aside of two hundred thousand for um, attorney's fees. Title fees, transaction fees. And uh, with regard to uh, the terms, we just saw some recent movement in uh, the tenure, and it was a favorable movement. Right in that low four, say four, three, even the long end is right around four and a half. So if we're fortunate to get uh, five percent, the debt service cost will be uh, very much in line with what we're currently paying today. Now, if we start to migrate between five and six percent, that debt service payment will probably uh, migrate from say one point one, one point one five up into that one point two, one point two-five range. Definitely affordable, still affordable. Uh, we're still, our goal is still to have a tenure term. Now, if in fact, we don't have a favorable rate, what we can likely do is extend the term to say maybe eleven or twelve years to keep that debt service in the same range that it's currently in. So uh, we do have a lot, a little bit of flexibility in terms of how we can design the terms. Uh, but it, again, you're right, Mark, it really is going to come down to that rate and what that looks like. We're seeing a little volatility in the market right now. But with this most recent economic reports, it would appear as though the Fed is now sort of reconsidering maybe even more rate cuts and maybe sooner. So we'll see how that unfolds. So, great question.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, Bart, when do we have to have a decision made by?
In terms of the budget? Or the financing transaction? The financing transaction? The refi?
I think we keep losing you, Bart, but um, yeah, my question would be, when does the board need to take a vote on that refi?
Generally speaking, uh, you can arrange the transaction or almost finalize it ninety days from the maturity date. So if we work back from nine fifteen, the earliest that you would need a vote or decide on it would be six fifteen. That would be the earliest. So it's likely that uh, when the board reconvenes in the new fiscal year, meaning sometime after July one, that would probably be the most appropriate time to sign off on the new transaction. That would probably be the most appropriate time to sign off on the new transaction.
That's of twenty twenty-five, correct?
Yeah, so our fiscal year be uh begins uh July first. Okay, and so um and then the maturity date on the debt is September of twenty twenty-five. So if you're making a decision sometime in July, could be even as late as uh early August. That would be probably the optimal optimal timeframe simply because um the rate environment. Now, if the rate environment is very favorable earlier. Then you would likely try to lock in a rate sooner rather than later, so. Because once you have access to a great rate, um you don't want it to get away from you, so. Obviously, you're gonna take action to probably do a rate lock. Um so yeah, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts, but in terms of the latest, I could see mid-August. The earliest, early June.
And and then Bart, you would um just based on what you said just now, I'm assuming. That you'll be working with Darnell and Jen Shaver as you're monitoring those rates. And if something is more beneficial sooner, then you'll you'll work with them to let them know, and then the board can take action sooner if needed.
Absolutely. So what we've decided to do is have monthly C E C meetings. And so we're kind of really stepping up the exchange and the interaction and the conversation around this because it's such a a big transaction. And so uh the frequency of the meetings, and if need be, as we get even closer to decision time, we might even. Change that to maybe even a bi-monthly or a weekly meeting. We'll see how that goes.
Yeah, thanks. Bart, you had mentioned, you know, a a great rate. Can you quantify what you would consider a great rate that you would want us to jump on sooner rather than later?
What we're paying now, which is like mid-threes.
Yeah.
That would be great. Highly unlikely that our current banker would re uh refi the debt at the same rate. Um simply because whenever you do a transit- transaction like this, they have the uh credit hedged, meaning that. When we take out the loan, they're actually uh um putting mechanisms in place in their portfolio. To hedge their risk in terms, you know, from a rate standpoint. So obviously, they have uh hedges in place, and so that's why it's highly unlikely that uh. We would experience the same rate. Unless, you know, the economy unwinds here in the next month or two. I mean, really, anything's possible, but. Uh that would be a a great uh rate.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I know, no more questions for you, Bart.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time, as always.
You're very welcome, and I hope you have a great rest of your meeting and uh uh hope to see you soon.
Yeah, Bart, are you gonna be sharing a little bit about three uh G as well, or do you want me to take that one?
If you would like me to stick around, your call, Jen.
You you do such a wonderful job. I was hoping maybe you would be interested in in doing that part.
Sure.
Cool, awesome. Then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is three G compensation and benefits. I'll let Bart take it over from here.
Okay. So three G, what we're really focused on here um are compensation and benefits. And um I'd have to say that uh we've expanded our graphic here just a little bit because. Um I think Mark posed the questions last year when we discussed this, and. I think this particular display really brings home what we're doing uh from a total. Compensation sort of perspective relative to the number of staff that we have and the growth. Over the last several years. Um so I'm just gonna go ahead and move to that graphic. And I just want to point out, as you can see. And this is on essentially page, the top of page three, but uh back in FY nineteen. Uh our annual salaries for the fiscal year, five point four million. And as you can see, we're projected to hit eight point one million um this fiscal year. Uh in terms of the percent change, you can see year over year, on average, we've had very solid growth. And a good way to do that would be to take the the fifty percent there and divide it by uh the number of years. Which is the seven, and so uh. I don't know that many organizations can keep pace with that, and so we've been really fortunate, so if you take the. The fifty divided by seven, you're looking at seven point one percent. So actually, yeah, so that's. That's the end of nineteen, so it would be the the seven, and so um. Benefits, we've been able to do so much on this front. Now, keep in mind that a large percentage of the benefits that we share. Um uh with our staff, um most of that has to do with para. We pay into para twenty-one point four percent. And currently, that's about fifty, fifty-three percent of our current benefit package. Uh and you can see the growth there, we've gone from basically two million up to three point one. Now, um I'd have to say that. The benefit offering that we are now providing to staff versus what we were doing, say, three years ago. Is I can say now, or I feel now that it's comprehensive. I don't think that there's any element of our benefit structure that isn't addressing really the gamut of needs an employee might have on that front. So that is super important. Uh again, you know, I don't know that many companies can do this. Um you know, back in FY nineteen, we were kicking out a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in holiday appreciation. And we're right there. Uh this last uh fall or December, kicked out a hundred and ninety-three. So again, we're doing a lot of great stuff for staff, and um uh I know they appreciate it. So if you look at that uh benefits growth over time, um. And you look at the the staff growth over time, uh and basically compare the two. Um even throwing in the average salary paid uh over time, so we got. Growth of only fifteen percent in staff, whereas the average salary is thirty percent and then um. That's basically average salary paid, but in terms of the overall growth in salary, you're at fifty percent. So you can see that what's really driving that is additional compensation to each individual. And not necessarily a function of the additional uh support that we're bringing into the organization to. To support our kiddos, so not necessarily a body-driven increase. But really, an individual compensation-driven increase. So uh then we have a table here talking about uh para. Um and in the last couple of years, you know, I I it's really a function of. How well para does is highly correlated with the markets and how well they do, because as you know. Uh para takes all of those contributions and they invest it. And you know, if the market has volatility, um you can kind of gauge. Uh what the state is doing in terms of their commitment to put in north of two hundred million into para annually. And how that oscillates, simply because if you go back. Um just uh this last year, uh the state was kicking in um. I think that's about three hundred and fifty million, simply because in the fall of twenty twenty-two. The market got really um uh beat up, and so they had to. I essentially put in more resources um uh. To go ahead and shore up the plan so that negative unfunded unfunded pension obligation. Um um uh wasn't so um onerous, if you will. Uh as you may know, only they changed um Gatsby seventy-five, governmental accounting board standard, Gatsby seventy-five. And I think it was uh sixty-seven. We have to report para's impact on our government-wide statements. And that impact is a pretty large negative number. So when you look at our financials on a government-wide basis, it doesn't look like we're in great shape. But if you remove that unfunded pension obligation, then our financial statements look in great shape. So um obviously, it's a big obligation, and I know that. If you jump on Co-Para's website and you kind of look at all the tables, there's a lot of tables now. They go all the way out to like eleven different tables, and I think uh what what that speaks to is the changing. Benefit structure for the new people coming into para. So if you've been in para for thirty years, you're gonna have one of those earlier tables. If you have come into para uh just recently. Uh after twenty nineteen is when they made a lot of big changes, July one of twenty nineteen. You're gonna be on one of those outer tables, and those are outer tables are not as favorable as the earlier tables. I used to. Uh refer to para as the golden parachute. I don't quite refer to that like that as much as I used to, simply because. Uh for the new folks coming into para, the new entrance. Um and it's not as um rosy as it once was, in my opinion. So there's that. So on to C E B T, I think um um this speaks to our benefits package. I think the offerings are great. Uh the expanse of the offerings uh and um in that last uh review that we had of all the offerings. We're just gonna need to get the word out just a little bit more and really share with the staff all the different benefit. Uh offerings so that we get a little bit higher participation. It just seemed like on some of the fronts, on some of these offerings, the participation. Uh wasn't that high, so we're gonna work on that communication element to make sure the staff is is very aware of. All the great benefits that are at their um um choosing. So uh in terms of um. Let's see, health insurance costs, we talked about that. Um. And we had some uh fluctuation there, and that had to do with uh our old self-insurance pool. And you can see that that graphic there, uh year over year, uh we had it this last fiscal year, um we uh from. Uh last fiscal year to this fiscal year, we had, we're estimating an eleven percent increase in that total benefit cost. And you can see that from uh FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, there was an eighteen percent increase. And then you can see a couple of nu- negative numbers there. That's when we had most excellent claims experience. And we were self-insured, and so that's one of the advantages of having a self-insured plan. That we actually can bring credits back to the organization and actually reduce our our premiums or. Um expense that we run through the income statement. So we report compliance on that front. Um let's see. Uh executive director will not change his or own co- compensation of benefits. Um. Not sure how possible that would be to actually get that done, because we have so many eyes on on the numbers. So uh that's not happening, and we report compliance. And executive director will not promise or imply anything other than that will employment. And uh we review these contracts all the time, and it's standard language, so uh nothing other than that will employment is. In those contracts, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with that. We report compliance on that front. Executive director will not establish current compensation benefits that failed to support the goals of the school. And obviously, one of our underlying goals in this whole process is try to retain quality staff. And in order, in an effort to do that, we have to be competitive. And I think that's what we're bringing to the table here, from a compensation standpoint, from a benefit standpoint. Uh just making sure that the 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 staff are acknowledged and that they know that we. That we care and we're doing what we can to make sure that that happens. Uh number four, pertaining to consultants, contract vendors, create obligations over longer term, so all of our. Uh contracts are primarily aligned with our fiscal year. So nothing's gonna overlap into the next fiscal year, because obviously. Um even when you take tabor into consideration about obligations uh for the future. If you do have contracts that extend into the future, um you have to do reservations of fund balance. And so obviously, that that's not happening, so we report compliance on that front. And let's see, establish or change retirement benefits so as to cause unpredictable or inequitable situations. Okay, so retirement benefits, obviously, we're in para, okay? And para's a defined benefit plan, and it's not a function of contributions, it's a uh really a function of. Um years of credit service and age, and um. So uh we definitely report compliance on that front, and in terms of unpredictable or inequitable. Um everybody participates in the same plan, so there isn't really any different benefit structure other than. When someone enters the plan, and that design is decided by the state. And the para board of directors, so we report compliance on that front. So there's any, anything specific there that that you wanted to further discuss?
I had a quick question, Bart.
Sure.
Um so if you could, Jen, could you scroll back up to that first chart?
Uh uh.
Oh, that one. Can, so I'm looking at the very first chart that you went through where it has FY nineteen at the top through FY twenty-five.
Right.
Could you just explain the bottom line to us, the students slash staff?
Okay.
About that.
Well, essentially, what we're doing is um taking that enrollment number and um. Uh that we're getting financed for, meaning some refer to it as. Our F T E, if you will, our funded F T E, and dividing that into essentially the total staff. Now, you gotta keep in mind that um. We have part-time included in that uh total staff number, okay? And we're not um. I guess you could say massaging that number. What I mean by that is that we're not waiting the part-time staff. Meaning a staff person might be a quarter time, halftime, maybe three-quarter time, so we're not waiting that, so. I would call this number more of an average than, you know, like a super accurate sort of metric. But overall, I mean, in terms of uh students per staff, the bottom line. What we're saying here is that we have a better ratio than we used to have, meaning that. Um per staff person, they were responsible for slightly more kiddos. And to move the needle, when you're dealing with this kind of size, it's difficult. And so um meaning that, I mean, we we go from ten point seven to nine point one. I think that's an improvement, because we have more support available for uh our kiddos. And uh you know, we're doing that on a lot of different fronts, um you know, aids, um uh. Interventionists, uh just more support in general, and maybe Jen could speak to that, how we're really uh focused on that.
Yeah, and so just really quick, it looks like we've gone from FY nineteen, if I'm reading this correctly, we've gone, we've. Reduced down about three, three students per staff, remember? reduced down about three s- three students per staff member, is that accurate to say?
Uh no, it's really like one point six, but you gotta consider also that we went from enrollment of twelve forty-one down to twelve fourteen.
Fourteen, right.
So so it's really like you could call it, it's moved like one or ten percent, if you will.
Yeah, and as you guys know from um, you know, what we've been doing over the years, um I think it was F Y nineteen, when we look at that, we had one school counselor for twelve hundred and forty-one kids. We now have three school counselors. We had zero instructional coaches in twenty nineteen. We have three instructional coaches. Um, we had one um E L L teacher in twenty nineteen, we have two. We had, I believe, two special education case managers in twenty nineteen, we have four. Um, so we've really been trying to build the capacity of our team to work to make sure that we are supporting appropriately um for students. And then um as you know, we have um quite a few para professionals that work with us. Um, we added in the lunch monitor position, not this year, but the year before. We added in four halftime lunch monitors. This year, we figured the num- the magic number's five and that's working out really well for us. So what does that do? Having those lunch monitors helps us to not pull instructional para professionals away from their role in the classroom with kids, trying to keep them in there more and um developing a team in the lunchroom that really works really well together to help create consistency in there. Why is that good for kids? Because if you're not getting in trouble in the lunchroom and it's a predictable and safe environment, you're not gonna be pulled out of class later to go to to deal with those choices from the lunchroom. So trying to create stability in our systems in that way um is what we've really been been focused on with the increase in the number of staff. But it's not just the number, but it's also building systems for how we use those staff and how we build teams within the building to make sure we're being effective in in the way that we're utilizing folks too.
Is there still one para, one dedicated para for each classroom?
There is one, we share one para for every two classrooms in elementary school. So in the thirty elementary classrooms that we have, we have fifteen general education para professionals that serve those classrooms. And one para will float between two rooms in a day and then they'll assist with um outside uh lunch recess duty.
And and what are they doing in the classroom?
So they typically work with small groups of students, um they provide clerical work for the teacher, um which would be, you know, they might grade some papers, bulletin boards, prep materials, uh things like that. Um assist with uh it during whole group instruction, they might be assisting individual students. Um and that's a service that we provide for all of our general education kiddos. Typically, in most schools, you would only see that type of support um either through a parent volunteer program or you would see um, you would only see uh para professionals for special education um purposes. And then we also have three middle school para professionals too that float primarily between math and language arts, one per grade level.
I'm sorry, uh he said middle school was what?
One, one per grade level.
One per grade level, so there's only three for middle school?
There's only three for middle school, but remember they've, we've got one math teacher, one language arts teacher per grade. So they're essentially structured similarly if they primarily focus on language arts and math.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
But well, so the the one para would float between language arts, math, science, all those core subjects, right?
Mostly, it's language arts and math.
Okay, so there you, there's not really a need in the other subjects, is that what I'm?
Typically, I don't, I guess you would have to ask the staff if they feel like there's a need. I I would say that the primary focus is on literacy and math and that's what we do in in elementary as well as provide that support through literacy and math.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Have they voiced that there's a need?
I do not, I do not recall hearing that recently.
Okay. I'll just ask one more, so uh with all those positions that have been um, I guess, filled or created or both, is there any other holes that you guys have identified? Or do you feel like with those additions that things are working pretty well? Or or is there any movement that may need to be happening or, you know, I'm some of that you may not be able to talk about, but um just from your?
We um overall, I mean, I think for the most part, we've been working, as you can see here through the numbers, like when you look at enrollment, right, twelve forty-one, so this was two years after the expansion, down to one eighty, you know, eleven eighty-one, twelve was, so it kind of varied through here. But what we're seeing is between this year and last year is we're seeing that kind of stabilize. And so what we're trying to do is is create ki- find ways to create stability. And so I think we've achieved that through the way in which we're using our para professionals at this point. Um, I feel like we have appropriate ratios for uh teaching staff um to service the students that we have. Um, we are, we have kind of recently looked at human resources and how we're structuring that uh function of the school and we've been working on ironing out what that looks like. Um, and then the most recent one that we've engaged in conversations around is just how we're utilizing our staff within the office. And so one position that we're looking um to add to the building for next year would be a marketing and communications person. As as you all know, that um we redid our website and so one of the primary functions of that role, which is not yet posted, but it will be soon, um is to maintain the website, support communications out to our community. We know that our community values um clear and consistent transparent communication. Um, and we do our best internally to produce those communications, but at this point, we don't have a dedicated person who um uh we have a consultant that kind of helps us, you know, along with that, we don't have a dead, nobody owns that role right now primarily. And so um also uh helping uh to implement our branding strategy that we have too. And so that's a role that we're looking to add. But other than that, I don't see much change in our staffing plan at all. I'd, at this point, that's really the only big thing that I see, other than, you know, things that we always do, which is clarifying roles and responsibilities within organizations just to try and make sure everybody is clear and aware of what we're all doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I think that's it, Bart. I don't think we have any other questions for three G.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and have a great evening. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, Bart.
Thanks, Bart.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item is three I, board awareness and support. Pass it over to our E D, Jen Shaver.
Hello, all right. Well, this monitoring report is all about making sure the board feels um that they have appropriate communication happening uh for them to help them make effective decisions um and the support that they need um to function in their role. And so I'm happy to report that uh compliance in all areas. Um, a couple key notes here. Um, one of the parts is making sure monitoring reports are completed on time. And so I'm happy to report that we we do make sure that those are done in advance of the board meeting. Um, making sure that the board is uh aware of any information that it needs to know, whether that be, you know, um just uh topics that could could impact the school, could be things related to uh uh possible media exposure or legal information. Um, and those are primarily given through the board president, although um written updates as needed are provided to the board. Um, any information that's requested by the board is either presented in an informal E D report or um maybe through the work session um or another written communication. Um, and then I really wanted to highlight in here, and I'm I'm kind of providing a summary, which, which, you know, hopefully, hopefully you like that approach. Um, but what I'm highlighting in here um too is that the board's really had a commitment to its own continuing education. And so as part of this monitoring report, recognizing your commitment to working with C D E and then one of our other consultants that's come in as we are working on developing the strategic plan for the board, um really have seen the board commit to making sure they are informed and then um advocating like if if there is an opportunity to get more information or learn more together as a group, you all have been very committed in that process and that's been really, really cool. I'm excited for the work we have ahead. Um, and then um what else? Any large internal changes we work to communicate in advance to the board? Um, and then I also have an obligation to inform the board if it's operating outside of its policies. Um, and then the goal is always to make communications clear and concise. And so um I think we had a really nice discussion um at the last work session and felt like that got some clarity on on what the board wants to know most and in what form. And so we'll continue down that path is as long as the board is feeling like that's working well.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen. All right, moving on to our next agenda item is our governing processes supporting our global objectives. Um, our finance committee summary is um highlighted here for anybody that is interested in reviewing that on the public side. And then if anybody, um Jen or Jen, if you want to give any key highlights there.
I think most of what we talked about Bart also just talked about, so I don't have anything additional unless anybody has any questions. I was gonna call Bart back if you did any. No, I
I was gonna say, the only thing that stood out to me on this was, which I know you guys don't really know, but the state budget gap of being one point one billion and how that could really affect, I mean, so that would really affect our per pupil funding, is that kind of where that would come in?
Yeah, and so right now, um I'm glad you brought that up, Mark, because um, you know, it's interesting because larger school districts that are experiencing declining enrollment, what's happening is is that the state is looking to remove uh enrollment averaging, which basically says that districts are receiving funds. Districts with declining enrollment receive funds per pupil based on an average number of students that they've had over a period of time, not necessarily how many students they currently have at October count. However, Bromley East only is funded based on the number of students we have at October count. So the districts with the declining enrollment are experiencing more of it, are gonna be more highly impacted by the conversation that's happening at the state right now because they're looking to reduce enrollment averaging. Um, what I think they were doing is seven, there's a, there's a couple of things. They're introducing a new state finance formula, which they were gonna phase in over a period of a longer period of time. Now they're saying we're gonna do it over a shorter period of time. And then the enrollment averaging was supposed to be over, I think, like a six or seven-year period and now they're wanting to reduce it down to four. Well, what does that happen? What happens with that is that the number of students that you're getting credit for in a declining district is gonna go down closer to the number of students you actually have. But Bromley East doesn't have that challenge because we're only, we're always only funded for the number of students that we have. So the the downside, though, is that the state is really looking at about a three point eight increase in P P R this year, which is, you know, more in line with, I guess you could call it cost of living, but I would you know, those of us in Colorado might disagree um with that percentage analysis, but uh at least in terms of how it feels. But um but they're kind of, it's more in line with that versus what we've seen in the last couple of years where we've, the state has been working to remove the budget stabilization factor. So they've been rapidly increasing the P P R, which is why we've had additional dollars to spend as a part of our budget and why we've been able to increase our compensation for staff along with the mill levy. And so um essentially, what's gonna happen is that when we're looking at labor increases for next year, you know, we're looking at about three percent in terms of increasing our salary budget. And so we're working with our compensation consultant around what can that look like? Because of course, we're still committed to being um competitive within our market. Other school districts, when you think about it, you know, we're fortunate that we're used to being funded for every kid that we have. So we don't, I don't think we need to change our strategy a whole lot. Um, but other districts are are having to really think about that in terms of the number of positions that they have. If they're going to give an increase, if they're gonna have, if they are, how much are they gonna give? And so for us, really, we're gonna just continue to respond to the state um increase in P P R as we always do. Um, we're also hearing that there's gonna be a reduction in title grant funding that comes from the federal government. So we're, we're also expecting a twenty percent decrease in that. So we're just kind of waiting to uh see how this all shakes out here uh in April.
Twenty percent as an average or twenty percent for Bex?
Uh, the district sent us an email saying to expect a twenty percent decrease in our title funds for next year.
Specifically for our school.
Mm-hmm.
And what does that kind of go towards or what is that?
So it goes towards um paying for uh special education teachers, um professional development for staff, um incentives, um we probably, we have I'd have to go back and it's a, it's a pretty sizable, it's a pretty good number. And although our whole federal, our whole budget, the percentage of federal funds is pretty small, but when you actually look at the dollar amount that we get from those grant, those title grants, it's actually a pretty good chunk of change. So we'll be looking at potentially a twenty percent reduction in that.
I I think Jen, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's anything that tends to fall under either like the special education and the services around those that fall under those, whether it's, I mean, we're not Title One, but under those type of federal where you get extra funding for those programs, that all is what could could be cut.
Gotcha.
Correct, so we get funded for, you know, based on the number of students that we service who who have an individualized education plan. We get a a dollar amount for that. Um, and then we have uh Title Four and Title Two and uh things. So we have the I D E A grant, our I D A B grant, that is probably the largest contribution to our budget. And then we have some smaller grants that kind of flow underneath that.
Do you think we were, we were just talking about added staff that we have because of those cuts potentially? Do you think we would have to eliminate any positions or bring them to part-time or anything based on?
We would make, if, we would make those decisions based on the number of students we have, not necessarily what the budget is because we still have to make sure we're servicing the needs of students. And so that's what would drive those decisions.
Do we need to have any, or are you thinking through um or going to think through any sort of contingency um plans if that reduction does indeed happen and like how we would deal with that as a school?
Yeah, we would, we, that's what Bart and I would end up doing. And so just, that's why, you know, compensation-wise, in terms of getting out employment agreements for next year, we, we've already kind of prepped the staff to expect, you know, April, like maybe late April to see that, why? Because we really want to make sure that these numbers are shored up. The state at times has kind of surprised us at the last minute, either favorably or not. And so we just wanna, what our role is right now is to draft kind of Plan A, Plan B. And then as we get closer, we'll know which way we're, we're gonna be able to go.
And they understand the why behind that date. Like you've explained like what's going on so that they understand like.
I I do feel like I have explained that. Um, I, we, we addressed that in our February professional development session around just know like this is what's gonna happen. I've not provided additional follow-up communications in the staff newsletter after that. So there, it could be possible that, you know, here at once, and you may not remember that, but it has been shared that, you know, we're, we're looking at April why and it's because of what we're watching the state. And the last thing we want to do is over-promise and under-deliver. We would rather um make sure that we're accurate in what we can offer people.
You know, and I agree with that, um, uh not saying, because you don't know, so there's no way that you can say anything, but just so that if someone did forget that or they were sick that day or whatever, we aren't creating any sort of anxieties around why haven't I received something yet or did you get yours? I didn't get, you know.
Right.
Those sorts of conversations where it's just like, oh, no, we're waiting because this is happening. Um, or or we, we're not able to, you know, the date is this because, not we're waiting, but the date is this because.
Right, and historically, Bromley has been very early in its offer, offer letters for the next year. Um, why? Because most school districts are still making the, like, they're, they're waiting for the state to finalize the budget before they're, they're doing employment offers. And some districts don't even send those out until the sum, the actual summer, like June. Um, in terms of that, yeah. So our staff has um been used to getting those like closer to around the spring break time. But as we've, we've become more um in tune with the market and more in tune with paying attention to the state conversation, we, we have slowed that process down a little bit um so that we make sure we have all the information we need before we start uh putting those out. Yeah, you bet, great questions.
I, I think Bart is always up for a good challenge, so. I think Bart is always up for a good challenge, so put him to the test.
I know. It's a, yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a, you always just kind of move, just kind of try to balance, you know, all the, all the things. So, and he does a great job with that.
Well, all the more reason it's important to be in a strong financial position, you know, so.
Yes, very, very much so. And, and, you know, and that's where I think the, the challenge for larger districts with declining enrollment is that when you all of a sudden are accustomed to receiving funding for, you know, let's just say round number 10,000 kids, but your reality is that you only actually serve maybe 9,000 or 8,000 kids. Well, if you cut 100 students from enrollment at $11,500 per student, that's a big number.
Well, and we've talked about that, I think last year, right? Where we've talked about, you know, what would it, what would happen to our budget if we reduced by? What did we go through the exercise? It was like two students or three students or? And it was like crazy what that reduces in funding. And then what you can't do because of that, so.
Correct. So a neighboring school district, you know, is looking at potentially like $13 million in, in loss in their budget. So just due to being declining, a declining enrollment school district. So it is, really it's very impactful to lose funding per, per student.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item is the board calendar. I'd just like to revisit this as often as we can so we know what's coming up. We have the Shamrock Dance. It's March 7th at 5:30, which is tomorrow if your kids are joining. I hope they all have a great time. Those are some school events coming around. We also have the academic town hall coming up. Jen, is that March 12th, right?
March 12th at 6 o'clock.
So those interested in attending that, I think we've all seen a lot of this information that's coming out for the town hall and it's being made available to parents. And any other community members that want to attend to see what it's like to be a kid in school and being tested and what's being tested. So thank you Jen for being proactive and getting that out to our community as we've heard that the community is interested in that, so.
And I just wanted to ask you a clarifying question. So I think on there I saw that we're going to discuss our UIP. Can you just very briefly explain, not like go through all these, because it's pretty detailed, but I just want to kind of clarify what a UIP is. Because I think there might be some confusion around it's an improvement plan because the school's doing bad. And I think it would be helpful to just clarify that all schools in the state of Colorado have a UIP and it's a continuous improvement plan, which if you're at a great business, you always have a continuous improvement plan. If you're on a great team in your company, you're continuously improving. And so I don't know if you could just speak to that a little bit? Because I, I do think I saw a little bit of confusion around that and kind of that we were going to be talking about it.
Oh, yeah, sure. So every year, every school district or every school in the state of Colorado develops a, they call it a unified improvement plan. Why? Because it's, it's meant to be a plan that's created by, with input from your stakeholders. And so how do we gather that input? We gather that through committees, through surveys, through academic data, through attendance data, behavior data. We look at all of those pieces and then we work with teams of people to figure out what the root cause is of the results that we're seeing. And then we put together an action plan as to how we're going to address the things that we're seeing. And every organization anywhere has an opportunity for, to recognize the great things that they're doing and also to work on building up the things that they need to improve. I think very few organizations are, I would imagine that there would be very few successful organizations that don't commit to a process of continuous improvement. Because there's always something you can get better at. And so Bromley East right now, we developed the Unified Improvement Plan in response to multiple sources of data. But one of the primary pieces of data that we did look at this year quite extensively was the results of the CMAS test, in which we identified two kind of key areas that we needed to work towards, which was written expression and reasoning and modeling. And so this will feel familiar to you guys because you've heard about the Unified Improvement Plan as well as getting updates on action steps and where we're at and how our students are progressing with the plan, how our teachers are doing. And that's different, the Unified Improvement Plan is different than a school performance framework. And so the thing that's with the school performance framework is the school performance framework looks at the, the results of CMAS tests. And they look at how the students achieved on the test, meaning how many students met or exceeded the standard? And then how students are growing? 60% of the points you earn on that are from student growth. 40% of the points are from how students achieve. The idea is the more you grow, the more you're going to achieve. So our school performance rating is developed based on the results of the CMAS test as well as the access test, which is the test that we use for students who are working on developing English language proficiency. And so the access testing that happened in January for a good number of our kiddos gives us points on the school performance framework based on how many students are on track for English language proficiency. And so those measures together are calculated based on their scorecard on the back of the school performance framework to give us a total number of points. And based on the total percentage of points that we earn, we earn a school performance rating. And Bromley East's rating right now is, is improvement. And so I think that's why sometimes you can see unified improvement plan and then an improvement rating. The rating is saying that we earn 45.4% of the points available. And as you all know, when we looked at that scorecard, if you don't reach a particular metric on the back, you either get two points, four points, six points for the different metrics that they have to offer. And so if you fall below the 50th percentile for growth, you're going to find that you're going to get four points. And instead of the full six points, if you hit the 50th percentile or more. And then your points kind of go down by twos. So it's very easy for a point, I wouldn't say it's easy necessarily for points to go up, but it certainly feels like it's easy for them to go down. And so, and they can go down in larger chunks depending on which metrics you don't hit at that, that stage. And so what we identified was that our students who have, our special population students did have some, some pretty good success. But where we needed to work on was the all students category for literacy and math. And that's where we were, we've really been focusing on the strategy of ICT, making sure that we're implementing rigorous assessments and instruction in the classroom as well as working towards the writing piece as well for written expression. And so we're targeting growing all of our kids through that more rigorous instructional approach. Yeah, you bet. Sorry, that wasn't super short, but.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jen. Up next for us would be our work session that happens on March 27th. Just to keep everybody in the loop on this, we will continue our strategic planning that's been happening, that everybody's been so great in participating in. So thank you all so much for that. And then any other training that we have that's coming up will be a part of that. And then our board self-evaluation. So I ideally think that we don't really have the framework around the board self-evaluation piece, but I think we should know that that's something that we should be doing regularly and that within our strategic plan, we will develop a way to self-evaluate ourselves. So that's normally something that happens in the April timeframe is that self-evaluation. And we're evaluating ourselves through the first quarter of the calendar year, January, February, and March. In addition to that, our next board meeting will be April 3rd. And we'll, we will cover the emergency executive succession, which is 3H. And then real quickly, I just want to touch base with this group here. We had spoke last board meeting about the terms and conditions of our executive director's contract. And those terms and conditions have not been solidified. They will not be solidified until the last week of March, first week of April. And so we do have an action item on our agenda today to move that, the signing of that contract with the terms and conditions to April. And I can provide you guys all that update come April. So I wanted to give you an update there. And that's it. Any other questions about board calendar and school events coming up?
All right. There's just one I wanted to add and it'll be in the communication that I'm going to send you guys tomorrow. But April 16th, the very, very fun, very popular student panel is coming back from four to five. So you all are welcome to come to that if you would like to join. We'd love to have you.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item is our action items, which on that agenda item is to vote to move the ED's contract compensation and terms and the signing of that to April. Do I have a motion on the table?
Director Marugo motions to move Executive Director Jen Shaver's negotiated contract compensation terms to the April business meeting.
Director Stickel will second.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, and we're getting so close, is any new business request? This is anything that we want to discuss at future board meetings. And so I just have one that I want to add on, which is to consider evaluating our bylaws, specifically our bylaw around, please forgive me as I pull up my million different screens. Our board bylaw D7, which is board member elections and appointments. We, for many years since I could remember, we've not done the election process because it's costly. And so we've begun to revise that bylaw. I will share with the board for a first reading at the next board session. And then ultimately eliminating D8 in its entirety, which is the election process. Because again, it is just timely and very expensive for us to run a full election.
But I, I think the other reason that we've discussed multiple times as a board was, I'm sorry, I know that we haven't really talked about this or anything, but the other thing that I recall this board has brought up is that we don't, there's a participation rate, I believe, if I recall, in the bylaws. And we never meet that as far as people for that. So, so that, that stops us also from being able to do that. Among other issues that I know Mark's brought up a couple in the past as well and some other folks have.
I believe it's 20%, is what it looks like. And I think at the last election in 2018, I think we received like 22%, like it was just over what was deemed acceptable. So, yeah.
In addition to that bylaw, there's another bylaw that I would like us to look into as a first read. Bear with me as I pull up the... So, one of our, which one is it? D2, is that the one that I was looking at? I actually think it's, I'm sorry, it still falls under the D7, the board member selection process. So all that falls under the same, which sets the, how the vice president establishes a timeline for future board appointments. I'd like us just to look at that as an option too, because I think we can build in to our strategic plan. Maybe a rolling application or something. So that's just something that I want to put on the board's radar for a first read. I think I've done. If anybody else has any other new, new items.
I will just say, because I know we'll discuss this during the first read, but I don't know if there's any legalities around us having to have an election if there are more applicants than positions available. So just check into that before we go down too far down the road.
Yeah, I'm actually so glad you asked that, Mark. So we've been working with a couple of different folks from around the state. And it's actually increasingly uncommon to do elections anymore when it comes to a charter school. It is all by appointment. And we can talk about what that process would look like in an all appointment board, where either there's rolling applications that come in. And then anytime there's a vacancy, we review the rolling applications on like a yearly basis or a, you know, however we decide to do that. But there are a lot of options for the appointment process and that the election process is a very old process that no charter schools are doing anymore.
Yeah, no, it's just like you said.
Great question. All right, anything else? Oh my goodness. So moving on to the next agenda item is adjournment. Do I have a motion on the table?
Director Saldivar motions to adjourn the meeting at 6:58 PM.
All right. Director O'Hare calls this meeting to an end at 6:59 PM on March 6th, 2025. Thank you all.